Okay. Good evening and welcome to the April second, two thousand and twenty four. Joint meeting of the Springfield and Lane County Planning Commissions. I am now calling this meeting of the Springfield Planning Commission to order. My name is Isaac Rhodes Die and I'm the Chair of the Springfield Planning Commission. And I'm joined by my fellow Springfield Planning Commissioners. Steven Schmunk, Bruce Weber. Vice Chair Andrew Buck, Alan Stout, Seth Thompson, and Matt Salazar.
Chair, uh, we, Matt Salazar is not there.
Okay.
He's excused. Nobody has, it's not me.
Okay, are we ready to continue?
Yes.
Okay, good evening. I'm now calling this meeting of the Lane County Planning Commission to order. My name is Jeff Choate and I'm the Chair of the Lane County Planning Commission. I'm joined by my fellow Lane County Planning Commissioners and I'm going to go ahead and treat this as a roll call, so please. Uh, answer if you're present. Uh, so. Starting with Vice Chair Stephen Snyder, I believe he is out sick. Steven Dignam.
Here.
Bruce Hadley. Michelle Hankis.
I'm here.
Eliza Koshinsky.
Here.
Marcus Lay.
Here.
Joni Peacock. And Christian Whittle. Okay, I believe that gives us a quorum, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you for joining us in this hybrid meeting format. I would like to ask members of the audience who are joining us by phone. Or online to please keep yourselves on mute. This meeting is a work session where the public may attend but not provide comment. There will be opportunities to provide public testimony later during the public hearing, which will begin at seven P M. Tonight, we are holding a work session and public hearing on several matters necessary for the adoption of. Well, Amalane Park and Recreation District's two thousand and twenty three Park and Recreation Comprehensive Plan. We will begin with the work session on Lamalane's two thousand and twenty three Park and Recreation Comprehensive Plan. And related plan amendments and follow with the public hearing beginning at seven P M. Now for a brief statement regarding conflicts of interest. They, there are two types of conflicts of interest, actual conflicts and public potential conflicts. An actual conflict exists when the planning commissioners or their family, business would financially benefit from or suffer. From a decision by the commission, commissioners with actual conflicts of interest must recuse themselves. A potential conflict exists when planning commissioners or their family or businesses. Business would possibly financially benefit from a decision by the commission. Commissioners must disclose a potential conflict, including. The nature of the conflict and then they can participate in the work session. Now I'll ask the Springfield Planning Commissioners to please disclose any conflict of interest. Uh, so I have a potential conflict of interest as a Realtor and property manager in the area. Um, Commissioner Buck.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I have several potential conflicts of interest. I am a licensed insurance agent in the area. Um, I do uh, serve on the Willamalane Budget Committee, um, have for the past several years. And own real property in Springfield that, um. It. Uh, but the Thurston Hills National Area, which is Willamalane's property. I don't believe any of these give me bias, but. Some interest.
Thank you. Commissioner Salazar.
Commissioner Salazar is not here tonight.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Schmunk.
Uh, no conflicts.
Commissioner Stout.
No conflicts of interest.
Uh, Commissioner Weber.
Uh, no complex.
Thank you.
And are there any Lane County Planning Commissioners that have an actual or potential conflict of interest? I will disclose the remotely potential conflict of interest that I work for Jerry's Home Improvement in Springfield, Dan Eugene, so we. Do business in Springfield, but that's a big stretch for conflicts of interest.
I guess I can say I have a very long stretch. I also have a property in. Uh, Springfield that I am, uh, my agency does property management for.
Thank you. Anyone else with Lane County? Okay, Commissioner Rhodes Day.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioners. I'd now like to introduce Springfield Comprehensive Planner Monica Sather. To begin the staff presentation, along with Monica, Lane County Senior Planner Jared. Bodder, sorry Jared, if that's wrong. Will speak to the specific amendments that require consideration by Lane County only. Following staff's presentation, we have an opportunity to hear from Willamalane Park and Recreation District. Who will share some highlights about the Park and Recreation Comprehensive Plan. Please keep any questions in mind throughout these presentations and hold them until staff and Willamalane have finished. Because we will have a good amount of time for discussion following their presentations. Monica.
Good evening, Commissioners. I appreciate the introduction and really appreciate all of your time and consideration of these matters this evening. As Chair Rhodes Day mentioned, we will get to hear from Willamalane about what's in the two thousand and twenty three Park and Recreation Comprehensive Plan. And I'll mostly refer to it as the two thousand and twenty three Plan from here on out. Um, and we'll hear about all that went into creating it after Jared and I provide some context, so I will. Share my screen now and given that there are so many of us online, I'll turn my camera off for this part. Okay. How does that look?
We're not seeing your presentation.
Mm hmm.
Nope. Good. There we go. You see a blue screen.
Okay.
There it is.
There you go.
Thank you. Alright, so the two thousand and twenty three Plan maps out the next twenty years for park and recreation services in the Springfield region. As informed by many months of analysis and as you'll hear later on. Incorporates what Willamalane learned from community leaders, the general public and staff. Willamalane's Board adopted the two thousand and twenty three Plan last September. And per Springfield's intergovernmental agreement with Willamalane, we're now at the next step in the process of working toward adoption at the city and county levels. Staff last came to the Springfield and Lane County Planning Commissions in November, two thousand and twenty two to share a progress update on community engagement efforts. Before Willamalane began to analyze needs and priorities. That meeting provided helpful guidance, given the community-wide impact of the two thousand and twenty three Plan. The two thousand and twenty three Plan identifies many types of projects representing identified needs, some of which are for parks. Natural areas, building facilities, paths and trails. This is a map for parks and there's a separate one for paths and trails and this one shows. Like the other general ideas for locations. But the plan's purpose is to set the conceptual and strategic stage for future projects. At this time, there are no property-specific development projects proposed. Though tonight is an important early step and eventually getting to the point of making some real change happen. Joint recommendations are being considered this evening because some areas of the two thousand and twenty three Plan are outside city limits. But within the urban growth boundary and coterminous metro plan boundary. This one I will spend a little bit more time on than the others, so Springfield and Lane County last adopted Willamalane's Park and Recreation Comprehensive Plan in two thousand and thirteen. To do so again for this update cycle, several actions are needed to adopt the two thousand and twenty three Plan in a way that's effectively incorporated into Springfield's newer comprehensive planning framework. And that reflects the two thousand and twenty three Plans project areas. So starting with one of those actions, we will look to, um. Hear your recommendation this evening later in the public hearing portion for, um. Council and Lane County Boards adoption of the two thousand and twenty three Plan as the recreation element of Springfield's Comprehensive Plan. This is a different approach than last time because Springfield now has its own comprehensive plan instead of just relying on the metro plan. Another is to make relatively minor text amendments in the metro plan to clarify how the two thousand and twenty three Plan is proposed to be adopted. And to clarify the relationship between the comprehensive plans. The text amendments will be a footnote in the metro plans parks and recreation facilities element and will coordinate with updates in the preface. Those actions also relate to removing and replacing the previously adopted two thousand and twelve Plan. The key considerations before the commissions for these joint decisions later on by the council and Lane County Board. Um, are whether the commissions are ready to recommend approval of the two thousand and twenty three Plan as presented. As well as the specific legislative plan amendments I just described. So I thought I would show the criteria of approval for a joint decision now instead of waiting until the hearing in case there is interest in discussing before the hearing. Regarding Oregon statewide land use planning goals, goal eight recreational needs is most directly relevant to the two thousand and twenty three Plan. It specifies what should go into determining recreational needs and into recreation plans and serves as a basis for the agreement between the city and Willamalane. That Willamalane be the designated provider of park and recreation services in Springfield. And that Willamalane be the one to first prepare a comprehensive plan that's specific to parks and recreation. The staff report goes into much further detail. The lengthy staff report is partly due to other statewide land use planning goals that relate. Because park and recreation does touch so many topics like natural resources, transportation and more. J- uh, statewide planning goal three for agricultural lands and goal four for forest lands apply to just Lane County's findings and decision. For the portions outside of the Springfield urban growth boundary and metro plan boundary. As for the metro plan and Springfield Comprehensive Plan later on in the criteria. This criterion in play language is that updates or changes must allow the metro plan and Springfield Comprehensive Plan to continue to make sense. So in doing so, a proposal must show how it is consistent with everything that's in these plans and not just the pieces of it that it affects. Lane County will also consider and take separate action for an amendment to the lane code for the areas of the two thousand and twenty three Plan that fall outside their Springfield urban growth boundary and metro plan boundary. That are solely in Lane County's jurisdiction. And I think Jared is going to speak to a couple more points related to that.
I am, thank you. So speaking specifically to the Lane County Planning Commission, because the two facilities Harvest Landing and Thurston Hills Natural Area. Are located outside of Springfield's urban growth boundary, Lane County must also take action to adopt Willamalane's Comprehensive Plan as a special purpose plan. Within our rural comprehensive plan. And this is accomplished by a minor text amendment to lane code sixteen four hundred four. To list the name of the specific plan being adopted, as is shown on the next slide. And here you can see in red italic font, the minor tax amendment needed to sixteen dot four hundred in order to adopt Willamalane Park and Recreation District's Park and Recreation Comprehensive Plan. As a special purpose plan within the Lane County Comprehensive Plan. The R C P itself only contains a chart which lists examples of the adopted special purpose plans. And the codified list is within this section of lane code sixteen four hundred four B.
And with, excuse me, sorry. With that, um, based on the findings and the staff reports and our review of the two thousand and twenty three Plan. Staff are prepared to recommend that the planning commissions forward your recommendations of approval of the two thousand and twenty three Plan as presented. And forward your recommendation of approval of the associated land use actions to our respected elected officials during the public hearing portion later on. Well, Amalane's presentation now will focus on the two thousand and twenty three Plan, um, itself. We have several staff from Willamalane tuning in, um. And I believe we can look forward to hearing some opening remarks from Willamalane's leadership.
Hey, Michael, you can start us off. I'm going to get our screen shared as you do that.
Okay, well, good evening, everyone. My name is Michael Wargo. I'm the Executive Director at Willamalane Park and Recreation District. Uh, really again, want to thank both the Joint Planning Commissions of the city and county for allowing us this opportunity. This is a big moment for us and we're really excited to be here. Uh, joining me tonight. From the Lam Lane team, I have Eric Adams, my Planning Parks and Facilities Director. I have Kenny Weigant, our Community Engagement Director. Jackie Rochefort, our Planning and Natural Resource Manager. And Christina Bo, our Senior Planner, who was the Project Manager for this. This process actually started when Willamalane went through a national accreditation process through the National Recreation and Park Association. Um, back in two thousand and twenty one and this extensive pro- process had the district evaluate all of our strategic plans and policies. And then updates our twenty-year comprehensive plan was identified as a critical need for the district. To continue to provide the highest level of parks and recreation to our community. This process, which Christine is going to delve into in shortly. Is one that I am deeply proud of to present to you tonight as we move towards adoption into the city's comprehensive plan and the overarching metro plan. Our Board of Directors unanimously approved this plan in September of two thousand and twenty three. However, as it's already been mentioned, it's important to note that while it's endorsed by my board. There remains flexibility to amend the adopted plan if deemed necessary by, uh, these, these commissions. Willamalane has a rich history of successful collaboration with the city and the county and we are committed to maintaining this partnership. Moving forward. The journey has been absolutely transformative for our board, staff and community and I'm eager for my team to present it to you tonight. It truly serves as a blueprint for delivering exceptional parks and recreation. Enriching the lives of those that we serve in the Springfield community and beyond. So without further ado, Christina Bo will walk you through the plan.
Thank you, Michael. Um, so as Michael said, I'm Christina Bo. Um, I got to be the Project Manager for this project. And worked with a consultant team that you can see on this site. Um, and I'm joining you tonight along with our current consultant Colin MacArthur from. Kieran McCarthy Landscape Architecture and Planning, who is helping guide us through this final adoption phase for our plan. Um. I last joined you, um, some of you, many of you who were present, um, in two thousand and twenty two when we. Presented our needs assessment findings. And, um, so today I will be sharing with you. And get this to advance, okay? Um, today I'm going to be sharing with you just kind of a general overview of the entire planning process. Um, so some of it may be a repeat, but also some of the priorities and outcomes that came from that. So this planning document is our, um, roadmap really for helping us achieve our mission to deliver exceptional parks and recreation to enrich the lives of everyone we serve. And, um. We update this plan per our administrative policies on a ten-year basis, but. Um, we, we have that policy in place really so that we can continue to respond to the changing needs of the community, continue to listen to our community. And to keep our work relevant, not only to the entire region, but also our, our partner agencies, planning documents, make sure that we're keeping in tune and aligned. With, um, our partner needs as well going forward. This is the, I think you'll see the slide a couple of times tonight. Um, this is a general overview of our process. Um, and this was created kind of at the, the start of our process, so the timeline shifted as we move forward. But I like it because it shows some of the key phases of work that went into this planning process, so. There's the, um, the project kicked off, as was mentioned, the actual plan itself started in two thousand and twenty two in the spring. Um, and then the summer and fall were, um, very full of community engagement and needs assessment analysis. In order to come up with findings, um, which were presented to a lot of our partner agencies, yourselves included. In the fall of two thousand and twenty two. Um, today I'm going to go through some of those needs assessment, the, the, um, community engagement and analysis that went into creating those findings. And share some examples of that. Um, and then just from, from that point in the fall two thousand and twenty two, we went through the process of drafting findings. And drafting a, a draft comprehensive plan by the spring of two thousand and twenty three and adopted the plan as was already mentioned in September of two thousand and twenty three. So I'll jump first into the public engagement process, um, briefly overview of some of the key strategies that we use during this process. Overall, we had about thirty eight hundred active engagement. Um, with, uh, with the community through various different methods. So our main method that we used was this survey. We started with a statistically valid survey and once we reached kind of that statistical significance, we opened up the survey to the broad public. And so in total, we were able to receive about sixteen hundred responses from the public. So it was a huge amount of data. Um, and is still a great resource for us, will be for years to come. This is one result that came out of that. Um, so this one is talking about the top ten most important facilities and services for Springfield households. So, uh, folks ranked from one to five, what their, uh, preferences were. And the top four there, I think it's one, two, three, four that you see there. Are, are ones that repeatedly showed up in all of our engagement efforts. That's why I kind of picked this finding to share. People really think value park safety and maintenance, um, natural areas and open spaces, trails and parks. Trails in parks or trail systems and restrooms. Those things are mentioned again and again from the public. We also had, um, a series of targeted conversations with groups in the community, um. And, uh, to learn about specific user group desires and specific areas of interest. And so these included. Um, spec- specific engagement efforts with teens, Latinx community, American Indian and Alaska Native communities. Uh, folks who are, uh, subject that subject matter experts in natural areas and trails and trail advocates. Um, and then folks within the accessibility and inclusion community, both advocates and members of the community participated in conversations with us. I think we had over, um, nearly, I'll say nearly three hundred participants in these conversations. And then we also had a series of, uh, interviews with regional leaders as well. In addition to all this engagement, um, we went out into the public and went to twenty two events. Um, and about half of these were Willamalane events and half of them were other agencies events. And so we had a fun, interactive way for folks to be able to engage. They received tokens, could vote on their most priority improvement, um, for them. Both recreational improvement or, uh, a capital project improvement that they felt was a priority for them or their family. Um, so through this process, we had, I think, the most engagement. We had over seventeen hundred responses. And it gave us not only some fun data, but a one-on-one kind of chance to check in with folks in the community, have conversations and encourage them to take our survey. Um, and engage with us in other ways to learn more from them. And so from this kind of fun poll, we learned that outdoor pools and water play was a really high priority for our community. Um, they expanded trail system. Improved existing playgrounds and childcare were the top ranking. Um, priorities. So out of the thirty eight hundred kind of, uh, points of contact we had with our community, we, we learned a lot. And in, during that same process, we were also doing a lot of analysis in our parks and we did that with the help of our consultant team. We did, um, an inventory of our perk system. We looked at the level of service that our parks are providing. We looked at the, our community demographics and looked at national, local trends as well. I'm going to run few, one through a few of those as well to give you an idea of some of the other work that was done. So our demographics, um, were a big part of our planning process to kind of understand. Not only who we're planning for, but also how we should be engaging with our community. So we, a couple of things, interesting things that we learned through our demographic analysis is that our community is becoming more diverse. Um, we have, we had nearly, uh, fifteen percent Hispanic or Latino population when we, um. At the time of the, the demographic analysis and we are nearing seventeen percent or projected to reach seventeen percent in just a few years. That's up from just over twelve percent, I think, in our two thousand and twelve plan. Um, we learned that we have a higher percentage of people identifying as having some sort of disability as well. So Oregon State reports about fourteen percent of people identifying having a disability. Our local community identified about nineteen percent people, I, I'm having a disability. And then lastly, we also show a continual trend for our aging population and so. The number of folks in our community who are sixty-five or plus will continue to increase as we go forward. So these are all things that help us consider the types of improvements, types of planning that we need to be doing going forward. In addition to that, we went out to our perk system and we looked at everything we had. So not only what's in our parks, but what is the quality of? The things in our parks, um, are we, what needs work? Um, within those parks. So we took an assessment of that and everything was scored. Um, and then through that process, we also got to learn what we've completed since two thousand and twelve, when we did our last planning effort. And so we learned that we have need improvements to sixteen parks and facilities. We've built. Four new neighborhood parks and made renovations at the existing parks. We've constructed over fourteen miles of trails. Provided access to over seven hundred additional acres and natural area. Conducted upgrades at three facilities, constructed seven new restaurant facilities and expanded recreation and programming across the district. Once we re- we had, um, some data collected in our parks, we were able to do a spatial analysis to see where. Walkable access to recreation and parks is provided in the community. So this map is showing a result of that analysis. And it shows a half-mile walk radius. So Willamalane kind of strives for this half-mile walkable access to parks and recreation in the community. Um, and here you can see that areas in pink have adequate service. Area, areas in yellow have a, a lower level of service, meaning that they may get, they may have some service that it rates lower on the quality. Uh, or quantity of what was provided than other parks. And then areas in gray receive no service and some of those areas. You'll probably identify yourselves as being areas that may be commercial or industrial as well. So you have to have a little inside perspective when you're looking at this as well. Keep that in mind. Um, the hatched areas are areas that have access to schools. And so those are opportunities that we can partner with a school district to try to enhance service in areas where. Those mo- might overlap with low or no service. Um. And then in summary, from that, we were able to understand that twenty-five percent of our community currently has adequate service. Fifty-five percent have a lower level of service and twenty percent currently receive no service. We did the same exercise with trails, which I'm not sharing because I'm trying to keep this brief, two years of information in fifteen minutes. But, um, the, we did the same study for trails and so what we learned from that one, you can see at the bottom of this slide here, that fifty-four percent has no walkable access to trail access points. Forty-six percent do have walkable access. So there's a little bit of gap there into having access to trails. And then all of that data. Um, was put into this tool, I like to call it, that our consultants created that help us identify area, priority areas in our community. So if we invest. In new improvements, increase our level of service in these areas shown in red, it will have the greatest impact. It'll, um, provide a greater service to the greater number of people who are going to benefit the most. Excuse me, so. Um, the one thing that this map doesn't show. Is that, um. Growing areas of Springfield. So we also had to work with our partners to understand where development is happening and make sure that we're planning and thinking ahead of where. Future underserved areas might be created if we're not planning ahead. Okay, so from all that analysis, we came out with seven goals. And these seven goals focus on key items up for each one. So the first one looks at district administration. The second one looks at our parks. The third one's looking at trails. The fourth one is focusing on recreation. Or facilities, excuse me. The fifth one is looking at, um. Maintenance. The sixth one has, um. Looking at recreation and the seventh one is looking at, um, management. And implementation of the plan. Apologize. Having a coughing attack. Um, each of those goals, I'm going to back up for just a second. Each of those goals has a series of the. And each of those goals, I'm going to back up for just a second. Each of those goals has a series of strategies and actions that support them. And then is also supported by a capital project list. So this capital project list has. Hundred and nineteen projects that are broken down into short. Which is one to five years midterm projects, which is five to ten years. Long for long-term projects, which is ten plus years and then ongoing projects. And so there's a lot of projects in there. I'll let you look at this slide while I drink another cup of water, sip of water. But they're broken down into a series of different. Project categories. I'm going to pause for just a second so I can get some water. All right. So these projects are listed in our appendix. And these maps support those they align, the project numbers align with the projects listed in the appendix. So this this project recommendation map includes ones for parks. And then there's another map that provides ones for trails. And these maps both show the short term, the midterm and the ongoing projects. So these are all ones that could happen within our next planning horizon from one to ten years. At which point we would ideally update our plan and make it more current. We wanted to provide a couple examples of projects just to get you an idea of things that were most priorities for us in the near future. So. Some of these included upgrades at existing parks. If you're familiar with our park system, you might know some of these Tyson Park, Greenberg Park, Georgia Pacific Natural Area. James Park and Menlo Park. In addition to that, we had an outdoor water play, as you heard, was a very high priority. So we don't have a park identified for that. But that is a short-term priority to try to find a place for it to happen. Yeah, but a couple spots where a new neighborhood park would be needed based on new development happening in our community. We have several opportunities for acquiring future parkland, including Glenwood. And then the Mackenzie Riverfront Multi-Use Path, which would be an opportunity to connect. The Ewan Path into Thurston, Mackenzie River. I was totally fine like twenty minutes ago. All right. And then the last kind of point before I wrap up here and and take able to take questions and drink some more water. I wanted to highlight the fact that we had a huge amount of coordination in this process. So. We coordinated really closely with City of Springfield Lincoln staff. We met with them monthly through the entire process, the planning process. They were also very helpful in getting bringing in other staff members that can help inform transportation. Parks or other considerations that we might want to bring in as we're going through that to make sure our projects are aligning really closely with the city counties. We worked with Safe Routes to School, Springfield Public Schools staff. We talked with the Springfield Utility Board members. Rivers to Ridges happened to be updating their plan. And so we coordinated really closely with them to make sure our planning. Projects were in alignment with theirs. And we checked in with the city of Eugene. We actually do have a very small portion of land that's in the city of Eugene, CGB. And they opted out of participating, but we did engage with them through the process. And then various other local nonprofit groups in the community were engaged as well. And so that's kind of a quick summary. Of the overall process, but we're happy to answer questions. It was a long two, two-year process. So there's a lot more that could be said. We'll pass it back to Monica.
Thank you so much, Christina. Yeah, at this time, I'd say any questions, we're happy to help answer. But I don't remember if Commissioner Rhodes died had anything more.
I mean, I guess my question is. We're going to do like two question sessions, right? So here and during the public meeting. So I guess if if any of our commissioners have a burning question, you can go ahead now. Or we'll move to the presentation from Willamette Lane and you can ask them later.
I don't see.
Do you guys? Well, Commissioner Rhodes Day. You know, typically in the in the public, in the public hearing. We try to give the the public the opportunity, this is a good time during the work session to ask any questions commissioners might have that. So it streamlines it for the for the other part. And so. Do we want to take some questions now?
I think that's great.
Excellent.
Jeff Cho, you have your hand raised.
Thank you. Just a quick question. So we had, as the previous speakers mentioned, a meeting back in November. Regarding the needs assessment, I'm just curious if there have been any significant changes to the plan since that last meeting.
Answer that. So, yes, that at that point, we hadn't come to any findings or conclusions. And so after we gathered all the information, I think what we were sharing with you mostly, there was more in-depth overview of. What we heard from the public and from some of the analysis we'd done. And so at that point, after that, we came up with some findings. We worked on our priorities map that I shared with you. That was kind of one of the key outcomes from that process. And then developed our project list, our goals, strategies, actions and our capital project list.
Thank you.
Commissioner Buck, do you have a question?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. So I first want to say, I've I've been really impressed with how this plan has rolled out. I've had the opportunity to see, to interact with it at various stages. So one question that I have is. Kind of a harder one to answer, but I know Eric's up for it. As the state has given us mandates on on housing goals. I would, I would call them aggressive housing goals and and growing our community. Was the, were we able to incorporate what that looks like and what that means for the comprehensive plan? I don't know if I'm making that clear, but I'm just curious how those two, two goals with the community needs and the and the and the state's mandates. Were able to kind of get fitted together in this.
Commissioner Buck, I'll ask a clarifying question and then and then try to answer what I think you're what you're asking. So. Just in terms of guidance from DLCD and LCDC with respect to. Kind of friendly communities and in increasing infill housing opportunities. You know, along those lines is is that kind of the policy?
Yes, absolutely.
So yes, I think overall, we're, you know, a comprehensive plan is is based off of population growth projections that. We look to both from the city as well as other reputable sources and. Christina can speak to that, but our consultants did take that into consideration. And then I think. In addition to that, looking at the geographic distribution of park improvements over the ten to twenty year horizon of the plan. We're looking at a mixed strategy of new park development to keep pace with that population growth. But also making investments in upgrades to our existing parks so that they're better better able to serve. Those currently developed areas as they densify further. So, you know, as smaller lot sizes or infill lots further develop. And you have a greater increase in population within a given geographic area. Those parks are better able to meet that level of service that we expect from our standards.
Thank you.
I see some questions in the Jesse Maine room. Commissioner Schmunk.
Yes, thank you. So along same lines, Commissioner Buck was asking about. Table on page A two, five, it talks about a goals and what Lamalane had to. What's applicable to the to the to the district and. Given that both system development charges and general obligation bonds, they are a huge barrier to housing. But in that table, you say no, it doesn't, you know, isn't a consideration. Why should this planning document not address that?
Can you repeat the name of the table? Oh, I'm going to try to pull that up really quick here.
Yeah, A five dash, A two dash five.
This would be exhibit A of the packet. So while people are scrolling, I can check packet page two.
Can you read the name of the table? Where's Monica? You're able to share it.
I'm looking for. The table A two, five. Was there a page in the appendix, Commissioner Schmunk on the?
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. I believe it's in the one of the appendices or wherever. I didn't bring it. Maybe I did. I don't know.
It's exhibit A, page one forty-nine of three twenty-five.
Thank you. And then, yes, I am happy to bring that up.
That's it, yeah. Housing number, what is it? Number, number nine, housing.
I'm very close. Okay. And then, excuse me, on screen share. Let's see. What are people seeing currently? Script. Okay, thank you. Okay, back to the plan. Is this correct?
That's the, that's, that's the table, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Is it number nine there?
Yes. Excuse me. Housing. Okay. I will say that the staff report was prepared after this and the staff report. Did make additional findings related to housing. Beyond this and found. Consistencies, but we did not get into the affordability aspect. So we found consistencies as far as population needs that Eric spoke to, land availability. And that we would coordinate planning efforts, but we did not get into the cost aspect. So I could use. Reiteration of the question, if you don't mind.
Well, yeah, I mean, you know, the funding of the park district is a huge barrier to housing. So a consideration of the pluses and minuses as to what the park's doing. I mean, don't confuse me. I love the park. I've I've been going to, I went to the swimming pool downtown before there was a fence. I've been involved. I love the Brother Festival. I'm sad it's gone. We have a great park system and and obviously these people that are running it now are doing a great job. But I just want to try to understand why a discussion about housing is not applicable to the to the to the district. I mean, it's not, I just kind of want to understand what, do you not think it's important or, you know, did you miss it?
Looks like there might be an answer.
Eric Adams can answer and I and I'll chime in as well. So, yes, we very much understand the importance of housing within the community. And the effect that delivery of new park and recreation facilities can have on. The affordability and mixture of housing within the community. My understanding with respect to compliance with the statewide planning goals is that. The city is responsible for ensuring that there is an adequate supply of developable land for housing. And that the mixture of housing that's provided meets the population growth projections. Based on. A distribution of different unit types to meet workforce housing and and other population demographics. For us, when it comes to funding park improvements, we we very much understand the cost implications of. Development of new parks on the delivery of of new housing types and the number of housing units within the community. But as it relates to statewide planning goals, that's a separate matter that falls outside of the comprehensive plan amendment process. And staff, city staff is able to correct me on that if I'm wrong. But outside of, outside of this process for a comprehensive plan amendment, we are currently going through an update to our S D C methodology. And affordability is a primary question of that effort. We also took a very close look at determining the appropriate mixture of funding sources. For our improvements that are laid out in the comprehensive plan. So that's why you see that percentage split between. Potential bond measure, S D C funding, general funds and and grants. And we have made adjustments to that percentage split from our most recent comprehensive plan in two thousand and twelve to what we're proposing now. Based on what we feel is an appropriate strategy that aligns well with the city's expectations for delivery of housing affordable and otherwise.
And I'll, and I'll just add, I'm sorry, Commissioner, if I if I could just add, you know, we've also had a meeting with Team Springfield and all the other. Entities that collect S C Cs to make sure that we are not out pricing ourselves and able to really offer. Affordable housing for those throughout Springfield. And as well as updating our methodology, we've put together stakeholders that are really area business owners, realtors. Developers that are all part of this process to make sure that we've updated our methodology to make sure that there's not a one size fits all. We really are looking at multiple approaches to make sure that we're able to provide affordable parks. Based on the new impact that new growth would.
Appreciate, appreciate those answers. I I just. Was hoping there would be a treatment of the balance between what the park. Should and can do and the impact on, you know, every, every home that's renters and the homeowners. So and then and then I've got another question and and I know we're running up against the, so perhaps I'll I'll save it.
If I could ask some questions along this line, Commissioner Schmunk, before we get on to a new topic.
Can I jump in real quick? I have one quick comment. I want to point out for staff and the. From Lamalane, there's an error in the table that was referenced before you move off of it. Goal nine is actually economic development and goal ten is housing. And so everything seemed to be shifted one off on the table. So I think that might also be have been leading to some some confusion with the reference to housing and goal nine. Because goal nine is the goal ten's the housing goal. So I just want to clarify. And for the record, that what we're talking about is actually statewide planning goal ten and then nine would be economic development. So, sorry, back to your deliberating your discussions and questions. I just wanted to clarify that.
Thanks, Christina. So along those lines with S D Cs. And the bond, potential bond measures, I have two questions. One is, is the budget that you you, I know that you're working on analyzing those S D Cs. So is the, is the. Funding budget that you used in this plan based on the current S D Cs that you currently apply?
When, so the the project lists from from this plan will be integrated into our updated S D C methodology. The current S C C methodology reflects an older project list from our last plan. And so as we go through that S C C project update, the methodology update, we will be incorporating with this updated project list. Does that answer your question?
Not entirely. So I guess my, my question is really. Is this plan. Based on. Similar, higher or lower STCs than you currently imply.
Well, the, the plan is basically based on the needs of the entire community and, and, and addresses what the. Cost could be. Once approved, then it's up to the district, our board of directors to say, okay. Here's the priorities that have been laid out. And here's how we're going to pay for them. And that would be. Bond measures, fundraising, alternative fundraising. Full faith and credit bonds and STCs were very limited in what we can use those for. So the STCs are not going to pay. For this giant comprehensive plan. It can only pay for that small portion based on the impact of new development. So it's. The, they don't. Doesn't, it, it's very important of how we're going to pay for it, but it is not identified exactly what all those sources are going to be. However, I can tell you there were. Work sessions done by the director, the board of directors at Willamette of. Here's this cocktail of all these funding sources of how we potentially could pay for this, but. We haven't not even identified what those priority projects are going to be, because that would be premature prior to adoption.
So then I guess my other question is. We're working on adopting this plan and, and later there's going to be a discussion at Willamette about. More detailed, getting more into the weeds in those funding sources. Do those discussions go back before the city council? Once you've made those deliberations or does the city council approve this and then you set the fee structure on your own?
So our. Yes, our, this, this plan, as Michael said, is our, is our vision. And then our fee structure and how we're able to implement it ends up being something that the Willamette Board of Directors would adopt. And I think, I don't know if Jackie, you had your hand up, if you have something else you'd like to add to that or?
However, I would want to add, there will be a public process regarding. You know, funding our budget as Commissioner Buck is a part of our budget committee. There are public input opportunities throughout this process, including there would be a huge one if. We do go out for a major bond measure.
And I, I was just going to add, and, and I, I wasn't sure if I understood the original question entirely, but. Where you had asked about the cost that there's. There's the question of how we are going to fund it, but when you see kind of the project costs. In the plan, those are based on post pandemic prices ju- just as development. So we had this sort of unprecedented. Twenty-five to thirty percent increase in price of, of materials and labor. And so if you see a big jump from the 2012 plan project costs. We've based it on, to the best of our knowledge, real time project costs. So that's what we're working with. Just as developers are.
Commissioner Buck.
Uh, thank you. I'm curious. Other than funding, I mean, I, I know funding is always. A topic of, of, you know, that we have to wrestle with. But do you first, what are, what are the challenges outside of that that you foresee? With this plan? I mean. Like, as I said before, I think that it's a great plan and I'm happy to support it, but every plan comes with challenges. I mean, nothing, nothing goes smoothly as we'd like it. So I'm just curious, what are the, what are the challenges? That the district foresees. Again, funding aside. For implementing this plan.
Yes. I can start and then we can. If you guys have something to add, Willamette folks, you're welcome to. But I think one of the biggest things is that the, the project has a lot of, of work identified in it. And so we know that there's probably more projects than we realistically can actually accomplish. And so. Trying to, to do the best that we can, make as much progress as we can and, and working towards prioritizing those carefully. And budget for those, obviously carefully. Going forward so that we can be successful and follow through on. What the community's desires are. Are there other things, Willamette staff?
Yeah, I, I think that you were spot on. I mean, as much as we'd love to give our community everything that they want and we have all this information. You know, the challenge is going to be really making sure that we hit those marks of the things that the community has told us. Is most important while keeping our programs affordable, while having appropriate staffing. And really being fiduciarily responsible with our operating budget, because that's really what constrains us. Operationally is we can build a lot of different new parks and all, but if we're not able to operate that at the level. What I like to call the gold medal standard that we have established, you know, way back in nineteen forty-four. You know, that's going to be a, a, a big challenge moving forward, but I can tell you one, one that we're up for and we have put all the pieces in place to. Really, I think, deliver the next ten years, some, some very special upgrades to our parks and hopefully be able to identify some new ones.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
I think we're getting close to our seven o'clock. Time to go to the public meeting. So I don't see any. Other hands raised, but if anybody has any last burning questions before. The next round of questions, now would be a great time. Okay, I think let's go to the. The public meeting. If anybody objects, we can. Transition to the next couple of minutes.
That sounds good to me. Are you prepared to adjourn the Springfield Planning Commission work session?
Yeah, let me just. Find. Yeah, so I hereby adjourn. The work session of this Springfield Planning Commission.
And Lane County's Planning Commission work session is now adjourned.
Request to speak heads for future public hearings are located right here. For the public hearings tonight.
Ready to start again if everyone's ready.
I'll defer to those in the Jesse Mayan room, but I think Lane County is ready to go.
Okay. Good evening. Thank you all for joining us in this hybrid meeting format. There are two public hearings this evening. The first one will be a joint hearing with Lane County's Planning Commission. What that meeting is over. The Springfield Planning Commission, or excuse me, when that meeting is over, the Springfield Planning Commission will hold a public hearing. On amendments to the Springfield Development Code that provide housing opportunities in non-residential areas. We now hold a public hearing to hear testimony on the matters of. Of adopting Willamette Park and Recreation District's twenty twenty-three Park. And Recreation Comprehensive Plan. As the recreation element of the Springfield Comprehensive Plan. Removing and replacing Willamette's twenty twelve plan. Amending text in the Eugene Springfield Metropolitan Area General Plan. And amending texts of the lane code. We are conducting this meeting jointly with the Lane County Planning Commission as both jurisdictions have. Must be involved. When considering adoption of the proposed changes to the Springfield Comprehensive Plan and Metro Plan. Lane County will make its own separate decision regarding the lane code amendments. The application file numbers associated with these actions are. Eight one one dash two three dash zero 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 two eight five dash. TYP four for Springfield. And. Five oh nine dash PA two four dash zero five zero four eight for Lane County. To provide some context, the planning commissions are not the final decision makers in this manner. After the planning commissions have reviewed the proposed amendments and other relevant material. Provided by staff, including any testimony from the public. Each planning commission will make a separate recommendation to its own elected officials. Those being Lane County's Board of. County Commissioners and the Springfield City Council. Then, City Council and the County Board will consider their planning commission's recommendations. And they will hold their own joint public hearing before making their final decisions on the proposed amendments. Before we open the public hearing, I want to let the public know a bit about the planning commissions and our role. We are unpaid volunteers appointed by the City, Springfield City Council and Lane County Board of Commissioners. As planning commissioners, we are committed to balancing all of the communities' needs. And to making the best recommendations we possibly can based on. City and county policies. And or in laws. And for us. For us and for future generations. I want to thank everyone for their patience and flexibility as we work with this. Hybrid meeting format. As always, feel free to contact staff if there is. Testimony you were not able to provide or wish to provide in a different manner. I would like to ask members of the audience who are joining us by phone or online to please keep yourselves on mute until. Your call to provide public testimony. If you would like to speak, please use the raise hand feature on Zoom or press nine if you're joined by phone. If you are attending in person. Please fill out a request to speak card and present it to the planning commission assistant. When called upon to speak, please state your name and mailing address. Please keep your comments to three minutes. Testimony presented. At this public hearing should be directed toward the applicable approval criteria and other criteria. That the speaker believes apply to the decision. For Springfield, the applicable criteria in the Springfield Development Code, section five point one four point one three five. In general, that approval criteria. Require that any plan amendments must be consistent with the applicable statewide planning goals, the metro plan, the Springfield Comprehensive Plan. Staff have provided prepared findings to demonstrate. That is the case with the proposed amendments, which are included in the materials for this meeting.
This is Jeff Cho, the Chair of the Lane County Planning Commission, and before I. Go over the applicable approval criteria for Lane County, just wanted to clarify that if anyone is calling in by phone when it's their turn to speak, it is. Star nine to. Raise their hand.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So approval criteria for Lane County. Twelve point three zero zero point. Zero three zero Metro Plan Amendment Criteria and Statewide Planning Goals for the Elements of the Project Requiring Co-Adoption. And Lane Code sixteen point four zero zero. Rural Comprehensive Plan Amendments, including compliance with the statewide planning goals and rural comprehensive plan policies. For adoption of Willamette's Park and Recreation Comprehensive Plan as a special purpose plan of the Rural Comprehensive Plan.
With that, I am now opening the public hearing for the Springfield Planning Commission and I invite. Chair Cho to open the public hearing for Lane County.
And the Lane County Planning Commission Public Hearing is now open.
Think we have our staff. I guess I'll, I'll say this before the staff presentation. Before we begin receiving testimony from the, oh. Does the staff presentation go before this session or after?
After your introduction.
Okay, thank you. Sorry. Before we begin receiving testimony from the applicant and from many members of the public who wish to speak. We will have a brief presentation from staff to introduce the project and to summarize the staff report. I'd like to introduce Springfield Comprehensive Planner Monica Sather. To begin the presentation. Along with Monica, Lane County Senior Planner Jared Botter. Will speak to the specific amendments that require consideration by Lane County only.
Is everybody able to see the title slide? Thank you. And thank you again, Commissioners, for your time and consideration this evening. I will give an overview again of. What's in the twenty twenty-three plan as well as the actions being requested this evening, similar to what was explained in the work session. With a little bit. Of a difference given we are in the public hearing format. So speaking to the main focus of the item before you, Willamette's twenty twenty-three Park and Recreation Comprehensive Plan, or twenty twenty-three Plan for short. The twenty twenty-three Plan updates Willamette's previous version of this plan, which was adopted in twenty thirteen. And every ten years, Willamette takes a critical look at how its facilities are doing. Whether improvements to existing ones are needed and whether more needed, along with how it might reach their goals to meet those needs. The plan identifies several types of projects, some of which are for parks, natural areas, building facilities, paths and trails. And the ones you would, oh, excuse me. The ones you had seen and will see on a map later. They will be conceptual and they do set a strategic stage for future projects that look to a horizon of about twenty years out. Let's see here. So this plan represents many months of analysis and reflects input from community leaders, the general public and staff. To prepare specifically for this evening's hearing, following all of the community engagement that happened. Prior to Willamette's Board adopting the twenty twenty-three Plan, staff provided timely and sufficiently worded public notice with printed notice in the Chronicle and the Register Guard. Posted notice at City Hall. Online at Springfield Oregon Speaks and coordinated with partner agencies, including the Oregon Department of Land Conservation and Development and City of Eugene. Who had no concerns as more specifically described in the staff reports. At this time, so far, staff have not received written testimony from the public. As Chair Rhodes Di noted earlier, the request of the commissions this evening does not just involve the twenty twenty-three Plan itself. Though that is the main reason we are here. There are several specific actions needed to make this possible within Springfield's and Lane County's overall comprehensive planning framework. Following a process for type four legislative changes to comprehensive plans, staff ask that each of the planning commissions deliberate this evening and forward separate. Recommendations to our respected elected officials. To one, adopt the twenty twenty-three Plan as an element of the Springfield Comprehensive Plan. To also remove and replace Willamette's previous plan adopted in twenty thirteen. And to amend the Metro Plan Text as shown in Exhibit B of the Springfield Packet and in Exhibit A of the County Packet. To clarify adoption and the role of Willamette's Plan. These matters are being jointly considered because of the reach of the plan. And that just reaches not just city limits, but throughout the Springfield region. So you can see here that some areas of the twenty twenty-three Plan. Are not just city limits, but are. Within the Springfield Urban Growth Boundary and that urban growth boundary also matches the Metro Plan Boundary. The Lane County Planning Commission will also consider in a separate motion. Without Springfield Planning Commission amending Lane Code to reflect Willamette's Plan that county staff will provide more context for in a moment. These actions are tied to criteria of approval, some of which apply to Springfield's and Lane County's joint considerations. And others only applicable to Lane Counties. So the criteria of approval that apply to the joint actions are at Springfield Development Code five point one four one three five. And for Lane Code, the key one being section twelve, three hundred thirty for Metro Plan Amendments. Overall, they require consistency with Oregon statewide planning goals that are relevant. They require that the plan amendments do not make the Metro Plan and Springfield Comprehensive Plan internally inconsistent. Let's see, and then that Springfield's, in Springfield's case, we will have a set of extra policies to consider now that Springfield has moved toward making its own comprehensive plan. Lane County will also consider and take separate action for an amendment to the Lane Code. For the areas of the twenty twenty-three Plan that fall outside the Springfield Urban Growth Boundary and Metro Plan Boundary. Those are solely in Lane County jurisdiction. And as you'll see here, Harvest Landing on the north side of Springfield and a part of Thurston Hills Natural Area. And I know Jared will have. A couple of points to make here, beginning with this slide.
Yeah, thank you. So because those two facilities, Harvest Landing and the Thurston Hills Natural Area. Are located outside Springfield's Urban Growth Boundary, Lane County must also take action to adopt Willamette's Comprehensive Plan. As a special purpose plan within the county's Rural Comprehensive Plan. This is accomplished by a minor tax amendment to Lane Code sixteen dot four hundred, section four. To list the name of the specific plan being adopted, as shown on the next slide. Here you can see in red italic font, the minor tax amendment to Lane Code sixteen four hundred needed. In order to adopt Willamette's Park and Recreation. In order to adopt Willamette Lanes Park and Recreation District's Park and Recreation Comprehensive Plan. As a special purpose plan within the Lane County Comprehensive Plan. The RCP itself only contains a chart which lists examples of the adopted special purpose plans. And the codified list is within this code section of Lane Code sixteen four hundred four B. Back to you, Monica.
To conclude our overview, Willamette Lanes representative will speak to the findings for each of these in more detail during the applicant testimony portion of the hearing. The findings in the Springfield and Lane County staff reports, which are Exhibit C in the Springfield Packet and again Exhibit A in the County Packet. Substantiate staff's recommendation of approval. Specifically, they speak to why the twenty twenty-three Plan. Is approvable and they demonstrate why the proposed actions to adopt it at the city and county levels comply with the approval criteria. A joint public hearing with the Springfield City Council and Lane County's Board of County Commissioners is scheduled for June tenth. To consider the recommendations that come from you this evening, following your deliberations and your motions. Thank you very much again, commissioners.
Thank you both. I, I will now transition us to the portion of the hearing where we will hear from the applicant, in this case, Willamette Lanes Representative. For the record, please state your name.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner. Um, my name is Colin MacArthur. I'm a principal planner with Cameron McCarthy. Let's keep architecture and planning here in Eugene and will serve as the. Apresent applicant's representative for this hearing and the overall application. Uh, I'm going to. Share some slides as.
Great.
So thank you, Monica and Jared, for the project overview. And thank you to the commissioners and staff for your time tonight and consideration of this adoption package. As Monica noted, this is a request for both a Springfield and Lane County Comprehensive Plan Amendment Approval. To adopt Willamette Lanes twenty twenty-three Comprehensive Plan, which I'll refer to either as. The twenty twenty-three Plan or the Plan throughout this presentation. Um, as Director Wargo noted, this plan was adopted unanimously. By Willamette Lanes Board of Directors in September of twenty twenty-three. The plan upon co-adoption by Springfield and Lane County will supersede and replace. The twenty twelve Plan uh and become the recreation element of Springfield's Comprehensive Plan. Uh, this is a fairly uh regular process. With at least two other plans um being in place prior to the twenty twenty twelve Plan. So Monica noted, the proposed amendments must conform to approval criteria that include consistency with. Applicable statewide planning goals, the metro plan, the Springfield Comprehensive Plan, and the Land County Rural Comprehensive Plan. Uh, I'm going to focus this presentation tonight on highlighting key findings that respond to the most uh relevant criteria. And um the most relevant uh one is statewide planning goal eight, which addresses uh recreational needs. And then other goals of particular relevance from the statewide planning goals are those that relate to resource lands. Open space, natural areas, transportation, and the Willamette Greenway. So, starting first with uh Goal Eight, recreational needs and consistency with that goal. Goal eight really focuses on providing adequate recreational facilities and opportunities for current and future residents and visitors. Goal eight addresses needs for residents in urban areas while balancing natural resources, protection. And preservation of non-urban areas. There is a guideline in Goal Eight, Guideline A three, which states that. Long-range plans and action programs to meet recreational needs. Should be developed by each agency responsible for developing comprehensive plans. In this case, Willamette Lanes is the agency responsible for developing the recreation plan. Because Metro Plan designates Willamette Lanes as the park and recreation service provider for Springfield and its urbanizable area. And because Springfield's acknowledged Goal Eight Comprehensive Plan Element. Is the Willamette Lanes Park and Rec- Park Recreation Comprehensive Plan. Uh, as part of the process, Goal Eight recommends inventories to determine. Recreational needs and developing needs assessments, plans and projects that respond to those needs. This plan does all of that. Uh, the planning area for the plan encompass but is encompasses the Springfield Urban Growth Boundary. And the district boundary, which does extend outside. Urban growth boundary in certain areas and and encompasses portions of Lane County. Within the planning area, Willamette Lanes owns one se- one thousand six hundred and thirty acres of land and a total of forty-five facilities. The plan includes level of service standards, which is in a National Park and Recreation Park Association metric. For evaluating park system performance. The plan proposes increasing the level of service standard from twenty-one point eight acres of parkland. Per one thousand residents to twenty-five point five five acres of parkland. Per one thousand residents over the plan's horizon. Uh, based on this standard, two hundred and eighty-nine point seven one acres of additional parkland are needed. Uh, and the plan uh addresses how to go about meeting those needs. The plan includes strategies and actions for acquiring, developing, improving and managing parks. Natural areas, walking and biking trails, facilities and programs. As Christina noted, the plan includes a hundred and nineteen capital projects that are prioritized in short-term. Midterm and long-term phases, as well as ongoing projects to be implemented as opportunities arise. The plan includes best management practices for implementation, appropriate community engagement, transparent decision-making, and sufficient resources. The plan includes a financial strategy. It is updated every five years. That strategy is a roadmap to guide the district's capital improvement plan, which is approved annually by Willamette Lanes Board of Directors. The plan explicitly notes that an integral, integral part of the planning process was to create a plan. That was consistent with other local plans, other local planning documents, and is in compliance with Goal Eight. The plan achieves all of that. Moving on to some of the resource goals, um and these primarily address the county, uh the properties, the facilities, facilities in the county, excuse me. Um, Goal Three, agricultural lands. Goal Three does not apply within urban growth boundaries. The intent of this goal is to preserve agricultural lands. Lamalane has one facility outside the urban growth boundary on agricultural land in the county. And that is Harvest Landing, which is classified as a natural area park. And natural area parks uh uses are consistent with those uses that are allowed on agricultural land. Therefore, no goal exception is required and we did provide findings demonstrating, demonstrated consistency with. Rural Camp Comprehensive Plan Policies. Moving on to Goal Four, forest land. Like Goal Three, Goal Four does not apply within the urban growth boundary. And its intent is to preserve forest land. Lamalane has one facility that is largely forested. Uh, a portion of which, which is in, in the county on forest land, and that is Thurston Hills Natural Area. Like Harvest Landing, Thurston Hills is classified as a natural area park. And like agricultural land uses, those uses are also consistent with those uses that are allowed on forest land. Therefore, no goal exception is required and uh the plan is, is consistent. Moving on to Goal Five, uh which addresses open space scenic. Historic resources and natural areas. The city of Springfield has a separate Goal Five Inventory of, of these resources. Uh, the proposed amendments included in this package do not create or amend or change. Uh, those Goal Five resources or any adopted protection measure, measures. The plan includes findings and actions that address the significance and importance of natural areas since. I'm sorry, I thought I heard, heard something. Um, keep going on. Uh, since, since the twenty twelve Plan was adopted, uh Willamette Lanes has increased its natural areas from. A hundred and eighty-six acres in twenty twelve and no dedicated staff. To now well over eight hundred acres and two full-time staff in twenty twenty-three, so big improvement of, on just over ten years. The plan supports, also supports expanded habitat and natural area amenities within parks. The plan supports opportunities to acquire land for improved capacity, access to existing natural areas. Uh, and these specifically include Harvest Landing, Thurston Natural Area, Willamette Heights, and the Georgia Pacific Natural Area. There is a connection between the purpose of Goal Five. And the findings, goals and strategies in the plan, and both are mutually supportive and consistent in intent with each other. Moving on to um Goal, Goal Twelve, which is transportation. Uh, we did review the plan's project list for consistency with the Springfield Transportation System Plan. Project list, and that analysis did not reveal any conflicts. Uh, but instead revealed similar uh compatible projects. And characteristics, which is a product of, of good coordination between this plan and the, and the Springfield TSP. There are nine projects included in the plan that are similar and consistent with the Springfield TSP. And as detailed in the, in the findings. Adoption of the plan will not significantly, significantly affect. Any existing or planned transportation facilities, which is important for compliance with the TPR. And uh also necessary for compliance with um Goal Five requirements. And then the Willamette Greenway. The Metro Plan also includes a, an expanded uh Willamette Greenway element that addresses river corridors and waterways. Willamette Lanes currently operates two parks along the main stem of the Willamette River. They have three additional parks on the Middle Fork Willamette River. They have two parks on the Mackenzie River, and they have multi-use paths um along the Willamette. The plan includes twenty-four projects that support this goal and the Metro Plan Element. These projects are aimed at improving and enhancing access to rivers and waterways. Through park improvements, bridge, multi-use path design, development and other acquisition projects. All of these projects are consistent with the goal's intent. To allow water-related and water-dependent recreational uses. Within the Greenway and along rivers and corridors. And to ensure that those uses are compatible with the natural and scenic qualities. That are inherent to the goal. And then finally, uh plan consistency. This is consistency with the Springfield Cock Plan, the Lane County Cock Plan and the Metro Plan. Uh, for, for Lamalane's purposes, this plan replaces and supersedes. All of the previously adopted park and recreation comprehensive plans. And upon adoption, this plan will become Springfield's acknowledged Recreation Comprehensive Plan Element. The proposal does include amendments to the Metro Plan text to update Preface Section. The amendments also update the Park and Recreation Facilities Element to note that. The plan, this plan is that element of the Springfield Comprehensive Plan. And to refer to the plan for the adopted approach to park and recreation sys- system planning. Uh, within uh Springfield's urbanizable area. The amendments also demonstrate consistency with the Lane County Rural Comprehensive Plan. For the portions of the, of the, of the planning area that is outside the urban growth boundary. And as Jared mentioned, the amendments include a text amendment to add the plan to the Rural Comprehensive Plan itself. And uh we would encourage planning commission to refer to the staff report and application materials for more extensive findings um. Substantiating consistency with really all, all three of those, three of these plans. And then um finally, in conclusion. Willamette Lanes has provided a high level of service to Springfield and Lane County since nineteen nineteen forty-four. Willamette Lanes is an award-winning and nationally accredited park and recreation district. Adoption of the twenty twenty-three Plan will complete the recreation element of Springfield's Comprehensive Plan. It will guide district actions for the next twenty years. And it will allow Willamette Lanes to improve and expand services. Just as it has done over the last ten years and the ten years before that. The district has fulfilled its requirements and strongly supports staff's recommendation. For approval of the Comprehensive Plan Amendments. Uh, we appreciate your consideration tonight, and I'd be happy to take any questions from planning commission or staff. Thank you.
Thank you for orienting us to the findings. More specifically. Uh. Sarah, do we have any members of the public in the Jesse Main Room who would like to speak?
Uh, not on the Willamette uh amendment.
Okay, uh, do we have anybody on Zoom or on phone for that?
Not that I can see. I see no raised hands.
Okay. So then, uh. Would staff like to respond to anything that was said here? Or is that just if there were public comments?
Given there were no public comments, um I will like, just like to thank Colin um for his presentation.
I'll mirror that from the county perspective and um, and recommending the planning commission. Make a motion to approve the plan as currently drafted and all the associated amendments.
Uh, before we close the public hearing, do any commissioners have any clarifying questions on the facts of this proposal before we close the public hearing?
Well, I was.
Go ahead.
Well, so um. We've asked this in this work session, but ran out of time, so. Um, it's my understanding, it's probably a question for Willamette Lanes uh, uh staff. Um, the twenty-three uh plan document is um. Derived from the two thousand twelve Park and Rec Plan, which is being updated, and then the twenty twenty-one DEI Strategic Action Plan. Um, is that, is, are those the two primary documents that um? You're sort of bringing into this?
Let me take that one and then Christina, you can help out. My understanding is the two documents we're bringing into that, into this is the. The Comprehensive Plan and the, the appendices. Um, it's really one document separated into two. I believe the DEI Plan um informed the comprehensive planning process, but Christina, you can clarify that.
That is correct. We have uh the DEI Strategic Action Plan as long, as well as um. A number of like Park Master Plans and other plan documents that the board has adopted. And that were considered in the process.
Those two are specifically referenced in the document. That's why I point them out. Um, so um. Uh, the, with regard to the uh DEI Strategic Plan. There's a list of, of references for things that were consulted during that. I, I guess what I'm curious about. Um, I tried to look through some of these and so were there any, did you consider any uh opinions that were um. Um, not supportive of DEI policies or goals? Um, either in this or in the, in the twenty-three Plan, in the twenty-one um, uh Plan or uh, sorry, DEI Strategic Plan or this current twenty-three Plan?
Yeah, thank you for that question. Um, Christina, I'll again turn back to you as this is a pro- process question.
Yeah, and I just, I want to clarify what it is exactly you're asking. Um. Is, was there, is there a group, what I think I heard you say is, was there a group that? That wasn't identified in the DEI Plan that wasn't addressed?
Well, so the, the document has fifty-one references to DEI. On tw- on over twenty pages, okay? So it's a significant impact to the document in my, in my view, okay? I, I, you know, help me with this. Um. I guess what I'm wondering is, um, since you're using. I guess what I'm wondering is, um, since you're using that twenty-one D E I Strategic Plan, I don't see anywhere where anybody said, you know, this isn't a good idea, and here's why.
Um, yeah, so I think the reason that you're probably seeing references to the D E I Strategic Action Plan so much is because that was the most recent district-wide planning document that our board had adopted prior to this Comprehensive Plan update. And so we are integrating uh priorities from that into this, so that our planning documents are all consistent.
Okay, so, so um, is that a, are you saying that um, you're not sure what's in the document or what was considered when the twenty-one document was created? And or I guess, did you, did you consider any um criti- critical analysis of the D E I policies that are uh throughout the document?
We didn't critique the D E I document as part of the Comprehensive Plan, no. If that, if that's what you're asking.
Yeah, so, so, so this is, okay, so I guess what I'm asking is, is that um, this D E I, your D E I goals appear to be one-sided. That is to say, they're not um necessarily balanced. Um, of both, you know, in terms of what I can find um, in, in literature and such. Um, so I'm wondering why you don't even acknowledge criticisms of D E I policy?
Yeah, I, I think that, I, I understand the question. Um, I, I just want to make a point that um, you know, we're, we're not, the D E I Plan is, is not, not part of the, uh, the adoption package, and so I'm, I'm not sure if this particular line of questioning has relevance to the um approval criteria, and perhaps this is something we can um, we can de- discuss um after this meeting, but we're not asking for the D E I Plan to be, to be adopted.
So what I'm asking is, is the, the Comprehensive Plan, which is, you're asking to be adopted, has significant references to D E I and such things as social justice, which aren't defined in it. Um, and so I'm wondering, um, I'm, I'm wondering why um there are no presentations of alternate. Let me ask it this way. So when you went around and asked all these people that apparently support D E I, the document references, did you present them with a alternate view of D E I than what's presented in this document?
And then after that, we'll have Michael give some context. He's got his hand up.
So, so the D E I Plan um was unanimously approved by the board, and we did um, open it up for public comment, and we didn't receive any opposition to it. As a public agency, it's really important for us to be completely inclusive, but I understand, I believe what you're asking is, but if people are not um, if they don't see eye to eye with the D E I Plan where they ever heard. And there were multiple opportunities for people to be heard. We had multiple town halls about this. Um, some uh for specific demographics, parts of our population, underserved parts of our population, but also just general town halls. And to my knowledge, we have not received any opposition to us baking everything that Willamette Lane does into a D E I lens. Our mission itself is to deliver exceptional parks and recreation um to enrich the lives of everyone we serve with that emphasis on, on everyone. So um, although it's, it's baked into everything that we've done moving forward as a district since nineteen, since nineteen, since twenty twenty-one, um, you know, I, I, I still, I guess I don't fully understand um the question. We gave everyone an opportunity if they vo- if they needed voiced opposition to a D E I Plan or us using D E I as part of this. Um, and, and again, I don't believe there was any opposition. I'll turn it over to Kenny Wigan, our Community Engagement Director, who handles, you know, a lot of our feedback that we get from our community. Kenny?
Yeah, the, I mean, the, the uh Comprehensive Plan is also informed. We reached out to uh approximately thirty-eight hundred people. Part of that was through a statistically valid survey. Uh, we did community outreach events that were really there to help promote the survey, open-ended and statistically valid. Um, that feedback really helped inform the overall direction that the, the plan took. That was done with a consulting partner who um, collected all of that input and data and feedback, and then gave us that informed plan. Um, there were um, the things that the D E I Strategic Action Plan helped us do were things like, we need to make sure if we're going out and doing community events, we have um materials in English and Spanish. We need to make sure that we have bilingual staff available. Uh, we need to make sure that we're not just reaching people at uh our own Willamette Lane community events. We're doing things like utilizing our partners at the library. Um, we're doing uh different types of outreach events with um Springfield Public Schools, uh with, with areas where we're not just expecting people to come to us. Those were things that the D E I Strategic Action Plan really helped develop our community outreach and engagement plan for this Comprehensive Plan. Um, so while the D E I Strategic Action Plan has definitely helped guide a lot of our decision-making and um the district direction, a lot of that uh was still open to the, the greater public to kind of give their feedback and input in several different formats throughout the, the uh Christina, correct me on the timeline of when we were actually running those events, but it was, it was like a four to six month period when we were going through all of that public engagement.
Well, okay, well, thank you for that, the, for that. Um, I guess it looks like to me from, from what the plan document presents, the, the public would not have gotten um, a a fair view of, of that D E I policy. Um, there's concerns, uh, I have concerns about the policy and its, and its restrictiveness, it's um, and I'm just, I'm just gonna allow me to re-clarify what I'm talking about. Uh, criticism of D E I goals include concerns about reverse discrimination, perceived loss of meritocracy, resistance to change, and a fear of increased group tensions that focusing on diversity may overlook, overlook individuals' qualifications and abilities. Uh, these are, are also the D E I initiatives sometimes prioritize quotas over, over qualifications and lend to tokenism, diminishing the quality of work and education. Uh, uh, work or education. In addition, uh, that some of them believe D E I efforts are unnecessary if individuals are treated fairly. Excuse me, if individuals are treated fairly and equally based on merit. So that's the presentation I would have liked to have seen. Um, I just think you're slicing and dicing the community uh based on skin color and some of these other factors that have little to do with how you present the park. And so I, I'm just, I'm concerned that this document gives the wrong signal of what Springfield's about.
I'm gonna let Eric speak to that, and then that's gonna be
Thank you. Okay, go ahead, yes.
And end of this particular line of questioning. Eric, go ahead.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, in addition to the comments that Director Wigan shared, I also wanted to highlight that we, we took particular care and effort to bring our public engagement plan to the Citizen Involvement Committee of, of Planning Commission and received um unanimous support, I believe, for that approach, and over the course of the project, provided updates to the Citizen Involvement Committee as to our efforts and, and their effectiveness. Uh, to my knowledge, we have not discounted the recommendations in the plan for providing additional park and recreation facilities um based on any, uh opposition to D E I policies. So uh, we gathered neutral input from the community concerning delivery of park and recreation facilities. Uh, and again, that was consistent with the approach we outlined and took through our public engagement plan, as approved by the Citizen Involvement Committee.
Do any commissioners have any questions on any other topics? So, hearing none, um, I would say it's now time to determine if we need to continue this hearing or hold the record open for submission of additional information to be considered by the Planning Commissions before our deliberations. Unless there are any objections from Planning Commissioners or staff, the Springfield Planning Commission hearing will now close.
And does anyone in Lane County Planning Commission have any objections to uh, closing the public hearing? Then the Lane County Planning Commission Public Hearing is also now closed.
That's Springfield Planning Commission Public Hearing is now closed. So, uh, do you have any objections to closing the record? As a reminder, any information that comes after the Planning Commission so closed the record will be provided to the elected officials as part of their public hearing process. Seeing none, the Springfield Planning Commission has closed the record.
And are there any objections from Lane County Planning Commissioners to close the record? The Lane County Planning Commission Record is also now closed.
The hearing and Planning Commission's record are now closed, and the Commissioners Commissions will now have the opportunity to deliberate as a group. To facilitate the group deliberation, the Commissions will begin with their respective motions in favor of approving the proposal. If we are
Jared, do you need a motion?
Uh, I guess, yes, I do.
And if I, if I may just interject briefly, I want to clarify, we are uh, the two Commissions are operating consecutively, not concurrently for these deliberations, correct?
Christina?
That's correct. I, I think that's correct, yeah.
Okay. So I apologize if I'm, if I'm muddling this up here. Uh, what I, what I have here is the Commissions will begin with their respective motions in favor of approving the proposal. If we are ready to discuss the application, I'll entertain a motion from the Springfield Planning Commission.
I would, I move to uh adopt the, the plan, um, the Comprehensive Plan uh, but from Willamette Lane as presented in, in our packet and as presented here tonight.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Go ahead, Commissioner Schmuck.
Yeah, well, yeah, I'm gonna be a no vote because um, I just don't think this is presented in a way that's acceptable to most people I know in Springfield. Um, I mean, it's a large document, obviously, a lot to it. A lot of good things in it. I just don't like the emphasis of um, of separating our citizens by um factors they can't control. Um, we should treat everyone the same identically, and we should say so. We're not saying so in this document. Thank you.
Heard. Uh, any other discussion? So, um, I have some discussion. Um, and I guess I will start with a couple of things. Um, first, I would say I think that our parks are really spectacular. Um, and uh, I think that most of this plan is great. Um, and I have a question for Christina. Um,
Sorry, Christina Kraus or Christina Buck?
Christina Kraus.
Okay.
So I
First time tonight, it's been me, sorry.
Yeah, so I'm pretty uncomfortable with the um decoupling of the approval of this plan from the approval of the S D Cs that's gonna happen later. Um, is it within the scope of this commission to recommend to the uh City Council that they wait to approve this plan until the S D Cs have been flushed out?
Not um within the scope of the Planning Commission's recommendation in this item. Um, and it's also not within the scope because Willamette Lane sets its own system development charges. It's actually not within the scope of what the City Council um can consider. In the past, we ha- uh, the Planning Commission has made secondary recommendations to the council on systems development charges that the council adopts. But the Springfield City Council does not actually have um any authority over Willamette Lane's system development charges. But I do know that it's been a topic of collaboration among the Team Springfield entities um very recently, and it's something the council's paying attention to. Um, even though it's not within the authority of the Planning Commission tonight.
Well, uh, if it's not within the authority of the Planning Commission, then I don't have anything else to add. Are there any more deliberations before we take a vote? So, hearing none, are we ready? Um, to vote?
Yeah, I think you need to take, I think you need to ask for a roll call now.
Okay, uh, can we have a roll call, please?
Sure, uh, Chair Rhodes, die?
Um, I.
Uh, Commissioner Buck?
I.
Commissioner Schmunk?
No.
Commissioner Stout?
I.
Uh, you, you cut off pretty quickly. I assume that was an I?
I.
Okay, and Commissioner Weber?
Hi.
Uh, motion carries four to one.
Okay, so for uh Lane County, if we are ready to discuss this, I will entertain a motion to uh from the Lane County Planning Commission.
I move to recommend that the Lane County Board of Commissioners approve five oh nine dash P A two twenty-four dash zero five zero four eight as presented.
Thank you for your specificity. Do we have a second?
Commissioner.
Oh, who was first? Uh, we, we have a second. Uh, we'll say, I, I see Commissioner Hengis on the screen, so you win. Okay, so uh, any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, and let me confirm with staff. I'm sorry, go ahead. Uh, Commissioner Dignan, please go ahead.
Thank you. So during the, I intend to support the motion. Uh, during the work session, I took note that uh something Executive Director Michael Wargo said, he said that Willamette Lane attempts to maintain its gold medal standard in operating the park system. And I just wanted to confirm and affirm that statement. I'm a resident of rural Lane County. I use parks in several neighboring communities. And I can tell you, when I go to Willamette Lane Park Facilities, I'm always impressed by the sense of safety I feel there and the cleanliness I feel there in comparison to some other communities. So Willamette Lane always gets the benefit of the doubt for me. I appreciate all that they do, and I intend to support the motion.
Thank you for that statement. Did you have a, a question you wanted to clarify with uh Willamette Lane staff there, or were, was that just a vote of support?
No further comment.
Okay, thank you. If we are ready, I will do a roll call vote. Um, so as a chair, I vote aye. Uh, Commissioner Snyder is absent. Commissioner Dignan?
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Hadley, I believe, is still absent. Commissioner Hengis?
Aye.
Commissioner Koshinsky?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
And Commissioners Peacock and Whittle are still absent, correct? Okay, so five to one with, uh, it looks like four absent.
Good. On behalf of both Planning Commissions, thank you all for joining us and speaking tonight. The Springfield Planning Commission will stay online for our regular meeting, which includes a public hearing on amendments to the Springfield Development Code to allow housing opportunities in non-residential areas.
And with that, the meeting of the Lane County Planning Commission is now adjourned. Thank you to everyone for your work on this project.
Are we ready to just jump right into our other section?
Yeah, I think we have one more thing to, to, to address tonight.
We do. Are we ready to start with that?
Yeah, I think we're ready here in the Jesse Maine Room.
Okay, great. I hereby open the regular meeting of the Springfield Planning Commission. Can we have a roll call, please?
Chair Rhodes, Dan?
Here.
Vice Chair Buck?
Present.
Commissioner Salazar is absent. Uh, Commissioner Thompson is also absent. Commissioner Schmunk?
Here.
Commissioner Stout?
Here.
And Commissioner Weber?
Here.
Do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
No.
Okay, uh, we will now recite the Pledge of Allegiance. Those online are muted, including my.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any corrections to the minutes as published in the packet? Uh, hearing no corrections, the minutes from March nineteenth, twenty twenty-four are approved. I, I believe we do have some business from the audience.
Yes, we have, uh, one couple and one person that would like to speak to, to the planning commission and Larry and Carrie Rua. Would you like to come up here?
I think we're gonna let Sue go first.
Oh, okay, Sue, sorry, Sue Howe, right?
You want me up there?
Yeah, why don't you do that? Then we could see you. You betcha. Here you go. And you state your name and your address.
Hold on.
Nope.
But we get through the whole script.
Right, so, uh, we will now take business from the audience. This is the time in our agenda for the public to provide testimony on any topic relevant to the planning commission, not otherwise on our agenda tonight. Later in our meeting, there will be a public hearings specifically to hear comments regarding the code amendments for housing in non-residential areas. Uh, I would like to ask members of the audience who are joining us by phone or online to please keep yourself on mute until you're called to provide public testimony. If you would like to speak, please use the raise hand feature on Zoom. Uh, and dial star nine after entering my phone. If you're in person, you already did everything you were supposed to do because Sarah helped you. So, uh, when called to speak, please state your name and mailing address and please keep your comments to three minutes. Um, go ahead, please.
Susan Howe. Seven nine four South Seventieth Street, Springfield. Uh, we're in the Jesse Maine Room. Springfield Parks are spectacular. I'm here because permits were issued to build two four-unit townhouses within five feet of Jesse Maine Park. It it doesn't make sense. It doesn't fit in with, there's houses all around. There's nothing like it. Also, two duplexes. So we've got twelve homes coming into a very small property that's again, five feet next to my land and five feet next to the Jesse Maine property. That property, we were told, would have two homes. Then we were told there'd be a couple duplexes. Now we're being told there's twelve. There's unlimited cars, no rules on how many cars, so twenty-four cars pouring out onto South Seventieth where we have kids, we have dog walkers. Super concerned about safety. Um, that deed for that property said no trees shall be felled. Forty old, old growth trees were felled. City of Springfield didn't care. So the deed was dishonored. This piece of property, if you go out there, it has a rural feel. Again, it's all homes, families, retirees. We've got people with chickens who are their properties five feet from the new project. Just wanted to be heard. You know, you gotta speak.
Well, thank you so much for coming in and speaking to us. We appreciate knowing what's happening.
Okay, have a seat. Please state your name and your address.
I'm Carrie Rue, seven thirty-nine South Seventieth. I'm also, uh, concerned about, uh, this development. It's again, a kind of a rural area of Thurston neighborhood. Um, it, we don't have, uh, sidewalks so that increased traffic without sidewalks and parking issues. And then it, you know, it's gonna bring our home values down. Um, and I'm concerned that then we're gonna be annexed to have sidewalks. Um, and just the increased traffic where, you know, I believe is, you know, you all are, you know, developing and looking at the growth of, uh, Springfield. It's our responsibility to look at the growth of our neighborhood and try to keep our neighborhood safe and, um, you know, a, a safe place to live is our goal. Um, so to have a good neighborhood. And when you put that many units, you know, we all know that, you know, uh, high-density, um, rental units create more crime. And I mean, crime is definitely a concern, especially nowadays. It seems like it's just getting worse in the Springfield area. Um, and so, yeah, um, let's see, and there is a park right behind this property, so that'll bring a lot more, um, traffic. It's, it backs up, it, so it's the back of the property, so it will be difficult to monitor or to be able to, uh, um, see what's going on, um, if there's increased traffic in that area, um. I have concerns for, uh, the, the land stability in general, where you live on the kind of a slope. There's already water issues. And when you put that many houses on one unit, the runoff, um, then go falls on the properties below, which in that area, um, there's lots of land movement. Especially, you know, for older homes, there's been lots of, uh, shifts. So I, yeah, just wanted to express my concerns with. I thi, I don't see this as a, um, providing affordable, more housing for, um, individuals. I see it as one person's gonna benefit from it and it's the landowner because, um, it's not gonna be affordable housing. You, you know, he's not putting those houses on there, that additional packing rentals on there for affordable housing. I think it's more a process of he's financially benefiting beyond a reasonable. So, that's my, my concerns. I'd like to be heard and protect our community. You know, our, our neighborhood is sacred. Oh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Larry Rue and I live at seven thirty-nine South Seventieth, which I'm the husband of Carrie. You just heard from her. I'm not gonna say a whole lot more than she did, other than the fact that we live right across the street from where this development is happening. We're on a half an acre ourself. We're actually one of the first, uh, residents in Springfield to have taken advantage of the accessory dwelling um, codes that had changed a few years back to allow you to put accessory dwelling units on the properties. And we did that because of the trying to make affordable housing in our area. So we built a small apartment. We make it affordable to the renter. The, the rent is dirt cheap. And we thought that maybe that was gonna happen across the street. And like my wife said, we were told at first it was gonna be just two houses. Well, and the property, I believe, is point seven nine of an acre. And it borders Sue's property, it borders the park and three other.
Willamette Lane easement.
Willamette Lane easement and three other, uh, homes, not rentals, homes. Our area is filled with homes. And as we have just recently, in the last four weeks, five weeks, have seen that crime has, shootings have gone up our, our street. We've had two in the last four weeks. And I don't know for a fact, but I know through hearing other people, those were from rentals. And like my wife said, when you increase the density of a small area like that with uh, what is it, two, four, six, eight, nine?
Twelve additional.
Twelve additional. I just, it just makes no sense to us, you know? And whenever a lot of other developers build in Springfield, the community is given the opportunity to speak on it and give some input. But because this person, this developer owns this land, it seems like he can just come in and build whatever he wants to build, move wherever he, wherever he lives, and we're stuck with the problem, the issue that that is gonna create in our little, our little neighborhood, so. I don't know if there's anything anybody can do about it. But other than we just, we wanna be heard on it. You know, we've lived here thirty-some years in Springfield. We love it and we want it to stay a home. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I don't believe we have anyone on phone or on Zoom.
No, there are no one.
So, uh, we have our agenda item, housing in non-residential areas. Haley, are you here?
I am. You seem to be committed to panels. So I can share my screen.
Do, have a presentation, Haley?
I do have a presentation and Chelsea with me here is queuing it up.
Awesome.
Also gonna pass down the public comments that we received in case, um, the commissioners wanna take a look at that.
Huh? You print them. Don't you?
I don't like reading on the computer so much, so.
Yeah, I'm gonna need to stop, so.
Okay. Chair, are we ready to start our presentation?
Yes, please.
Hello, and thank you for attending this public hearing to discuss the Housing in Non-Residential Areas Code Amendments. My name is Haley Campbell. I'm a senior planner with the City of Springfield and the project manager for this code amendment project. Also with me is Chelsea Hartman, Senior Planner. In a minute, we will start the presentation. As this public hearing is pre-recorded, we ask that you mute yourselves and hold all questions until the end. In two thousand and twenty-three, the Oregon Legislature made efforts to address the state's housing crisis with new laws and one point two billion dollars in additional spending on housing and homelessness. On any given night in two thousand and twenty-two, at least eighteen thousand Oregonians were homeless. And state analysts predict Oregon needs to build at least half a million homes over the next two decades to keep up with demand. The legislature passed several bills that have prompted the following housing opportunities in non-residential areas amendments to the Springfield Code. The first is House Bill two thousand and nine eighty-four Commercial to Residential Building Conversions, which took effect January first, two thousand and twenty-four. The bill requires local governments to allow conversion of a building from commercial to residential use without requiring a zone change or conditional use permit as long as the land is not zoned for industrial use. The next is House Bill thirty-one fifty-one Manufactured Dwelling Parks on Non-Residential Lands. It took effect January first, two thousand and twenty-four. Manufactured housing makes up eight percent of Oregon's total housing and sixteen percent of the affordable housing stock, according to the American Community Survey data collected between two thousand and thirteen and two thousand and seventeen. That's why House Bill thirty-one fifty-one's major impact on Springfield is to allow manufactured dwelling parks serving households with incomes of a hundred and twenty percent or less of area meeting income, or AMI, to be added to the bill's definition of affordable housing. The bill also adds property owned by a housing authority, manufactured dwelling park nonprofit cooperative, or nonprofit corporation organized as a public benefit corporation whose primary purpose is the development of affordable housing to the list of properties where local government is required to allow income-qualified housing. The last is House Bill thirty-three ninety-five Residential Use of Commercial Lands. It took effect June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three. House Bill thirty-three ninety-five allows housing within commercial land use districts if it is affordable to households with incomes of sixty percent AMI or less or for mixed-use structures with ground floor commercial with residential units that are affordable to moderate-income households, or eighty to a hundred and twenty percent AMI. The bill requires cities to apply the residential density level most comparable to the commercial density currently allowed in the land use district. This project is a continuation of work related to a larger Springfield Development Code update project involving a phased plan to update the entire Springfield Development Code. Updating the development code to support efficient, timely, and clear development review is part of Springfield's housing strategy. The City of Springfield and Lane County are seeking approval of amendments to the Springfield Development Code. This is a type-four legislative amendment that applies to all land within the Springfield urban growth boundary, which includes land within the city limits and urbanizable land outside the city limits. So the amendments require co-adoption by Springfield City Council and the Lane County Board of County Commissioners. This project specifically revised the code to, one, address state law related to single-room occupancy. Two, add the conversion of commercial to residential use requirements in House Bill two thousand and nine eighty-four. Three, make significant changes to SDC four point seven point three seventy for income-qualified housing on property owned by religious nonprofits. Four, make changes to SDC four point seven point four oh five to implement bills related to income-qualified housing. And five, address other changes throughout the code, including significant changes to four point seven point one hundred for various districts, four point seven point three seventy-five through four point seven point three eighty-five for architectural design and multiple-unit housing, and minimum development standards five point one five point one ten, and site plan review five point one seven point one ten for multiple-unit housing. Changes to the code for single-room occupancy and to SDC four point seven point three seventy for income-qualified housing on property owned by religious nonprofits were addressed during the Planning Commission Work Session on March nineteenth and the staff report in tonight's agenda packet. Amendments to the conversion of commercial to residential use are addressed later in this presentation. The recording and staff report are available on Springfield Oregon Speaks, our public outreach platform. To address the significant changes to the code, staff will address the following. Substantial changes were made to four point seven point four oh five for income-qualified housing. The standards in four point seven point four oh five A through D were reorganized to make the code clearer and easier to interpret and to address House Bills two thousand and nine eighty-four and thirty-one fifty-one. And subsections E and F were created in response to House Bill thirty-three ninety-five. Subsections A and B address the purpose and applicability of income-qualified housing. The rest of this section of code was amended as follows. For four point seven point four oh five C, this section was amended by including a manufactured dwelling park that serves populations with incomes of a hundred and twenty percent of the area meeting income within the definition of income-qualified housing, including the addition of several income-qualified housing owners, namely, those owned by a nonprofit corporation organized as a public benefit corporation whose primary purpose is the development of income-qualified housing, a housing authority, manufactured dwelling. a housing authority, manufactured dwelling park nonprofit cooperative, or a utility provider who conveys property for one of the listed owners, and reorganizing existing code language into various subsections for clarity. For four point seven point four oh five D, this section was amended by creating a site suitability subsection, a development standard subsection, and a density and height in residential district subsection, and addressing the lack of income-qualified middle housing standards in SDC four point seven point four oh five. To comply with House Bill three thousand and three hundred and ninety-five, SDC four point seven point four oh five E was amended by allowing income-qualified housing in commercial districts and in mixed-use structures, provided they meet the area-meeting income threshold shown in the code, and listing the land use districts that allow only commercial uses and not industrial uses, a requirement in the House Bill to be neighborhood commercial, community commercial, major retail commercial, general office, mixed-use commercial, Glenwood Commercial Mixed Use, or Glenwood Office Mixed Use Districts. For four point seven point four oh five F, this section was amended by creating a site suitability subsection for requirements where this type of housing is not permitted, and creating a standards and procedures subsection for this type of housing. A requirement in House Bill three thousand and three hundred and ninety-five is to apply the most comparable residential density to the allowed commercial uses in the subject district. After consulting and seeking feedback from the Planning Commission and public, the following was added to the draft code. A comparable residential density for income-qualified housing in commercial districts and in mixed-use structures is the mixed-use residential density standards. The code therefore contains minimum densities for commercial districts and the mixed-use commercial district when residential only and when part of a mixed-use development. There are no maximum densities in this section because neither the commercial districts nor mixed-use districts have a maximum density for residential. In the commercial districts and mixed-use commercial district, the mixed-use commercial district development standards apply. The development standards in the Glenwood Commercial Mixed Use and Glenwood Office Mixed Use are referenced and stay the same. This option was chosen out of the two options presented at the Planning Commission work session because it was simpler than the first option. This recommendation also reflects what the commissioners felt was best to allow for simpler and more flexible code standards that support more opportunities for income-qualified housing. For instance, the existing mixed-use commercial district currently requires a minimum of sixty percent of the ground floor area within a new mixed-use building be dedicated to commercial uses versus the proposed code for income-qualified housing would only require ten percent of the total gross floor area be in non-residential use if less than twenty units are provided in a mixed-use structure. A separate but related topic to the Housing in Non-Residential Areas Code Amendments were amendments to the standards in four point seven point one hundred. Specific development standards from four point seven point one hundred were moved to the district that references that district. These amendments will make the code more user-friendly by listing standards that apply to a district in one place instead of needing to reference another chapter in the code. But what does this look like? A good example of this is the creation of Springfield Development Code three point four point three thirty, specific development standards in the Booth Kelly Mixed Use District. In the current development code, you can find public and private park standards for the Booth Kelly Mixed Use District in four point seven point two hundred, residential uses in commercial districts in four point seven point two ten, and warehouse, commercial, retail, and wholesale in four point seven point two forty-five. To make the code more user-friendly, staff moved these standards to the Booth Kelly Mixed Use District section of code in three point four point three thirty and created sections specific to these types of uses. The next item is changes to four point seven point three seventy-five through four point seven point three eighty-five for multiple-unit housing. For consistency and clarity, the standards in four point seven point three eighty-five B, building orientation, and C, building form, were moved to four point seven point three seventy-five to match the clear and objective standards that already contain building orientation and building form standards in the current code. SDC four point seven point three eighty was amended to clarify that multiple-unit housing is allowed in other districts besides R two and R three. And SDC four point seven point three eighty-five was renumbered following the removal of sections B and C that were moved to four point seven point three seventy-five. Lastly, amendments were made to five point one five point one ten for minimum development standards and five point one seven point one ten for site plan review when building multiple-unit housing. This included clarifying that the MDS process does not apply to new multiple-unit housing. A site plan review or multiple-unit housing review in four point seven point three eighty for the clear and objective tract would apply. And abending the site plan review applicability standards to clarify one incidence where a multiple-unit housing site plan review is required when an addition, expansion, or change of use is for a non-residential use in a land use district that is not residential and located within fifty feet of a residential land use district or residentially designated land. An exception to this has been provided when a multiple-unit housing development can meet the clear and objective standards in four point seven point three eighty. The amendments to the Development Code are subject to a set of approval criteria noted here. Based on the staff report and findings, the code amendments are in conformance with the Metro Plan and Springfield Comprehensive Plan, are consistent with applicable state statutes, and are consistent with applicable statewide planning goals and administrative rules. Thus, the applicable approval criteria are met. House Bill two thousand and nine hundred and eighty-four requires local governments to allow conversion of a building from commercial to residential use without requiring a zone change or conditional use permit as long as the land is not in an industrial district. This section was amended following the Planning Commission work session on March nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. The reference to all districts that allow the development of a commercial use was removed from subsection A as B excludes industrial districts and some overlay districts. Subsections A and B were amended and C was removed as the criteria was considered unnecessary. So what are the next steps? The Planning Commission will review the proposal and any testimony during tonight's public hearing. If needed, the commission could decide to continue the public hearing to allow for additional public comment or close the public hearing and conduct deliberations. A recommendation would then be forwarded to the Springfield City Council and Lane County Board of Commissioners, who must co-adopt the amendments. A joint work session and public hearing is scheduled for June tenth, two thousand and twenty-four with the Springfield City Council and Lane County Board of Commissioners.
Okay. Um, see if we can get the timings off here, just in case people wanna see the screen again. That is the end of the presentation. So I guess Chair, I assume we open it up for any questions or comments from the audience? Or from the commissioners?
Think you're on mute.
Oh, are we still sharing audio?
Thank you very much. I will now open the public hearing regarding the code amendments for housing in non-residential areas. Please remember to keep yourself on mute until you are called to provide public testimony. If you would like to speak, please use the raise your hand feature on Zoom, using the reactions feature or press star nine if joining by phone. If you are here in person, please fill out a request to speak card and present it to the planning commission assistant. When called upon to speak, please state your name and mailing address. Please keep your comments to three minutes. I believe we do have somebody for this.
Yes, we do. Mr. Farrington, would you like to come up? Give your name and your address, please.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Phil Farrington. I'm the Director of Planning and Real Estate Development for CDC Management Corp. in Eugene. Um, we uh represent the owners of properties that are in the mixed-use commercial zone within downtown here in Springfield, uh which we seek to develop or redevelop. So first off, I'd just like to say thank you very much to the great job that I think Haley, uh Chelsea, Sandy, um Christina, I'm sure had her fingerprints on this too, uh and anybody else who might have worked on this. I think this is you know, amending the code is some mind-numbing kind of work and and you've got a whole bunch of requirements uh foisted upon you by the state, well-intentioned. And I think this is a great thing to try to promote uh income-qualified uh housing and and to further it uh as is needed in the community. Um, I I don't think, you know, none of us should sort of pretend that this is gonna be some silver bullet and we won't have a housing problem or there'll be just this incredible preponderance of income-qualified housing or conversions from commercial to residential. I just think, you know, that's that's not likely to to happen. But this helps remove some obstacles that might be in the code that would perhaps give opportunities for this kind of housing to occur, which is a great thing and very much needed in the community. Um, the uh I think you all got the uh correspondence that I wrote up Friday and I'm sorry it wasn't uh submitted to you sooner for you to consider. Um, but you know, again, mind-numbing code, uh we got a lot of other things going on. But um basically what I'm trying to do is to make a thesis that um I think there is something uh somewhat flawed in the mixed-use commercial zoning district portion of the code. These amendments before you, which I encourage you to adopt, uh do help address that for income-qualified housing. It recognizes that compelling uh ground floor commercial use is not something that's necessarily uh required of income-qualified housing in these mixed-use commercial zones, which is a a good thing. The City of Portland, in fact, just recently um among about a dozen different in interventions interventions that they did to their code, one of them was pretty much parking for five years, the requirement for so-called active ground floor uses as a method to try to stimulate more residential development. We just recently built a a five-story apartment house uh in Eugene uh which has uh it's all residential. And I think it has a nice way of greeting the street, which is really the intent, I think, of some of these requirements uh for ground-level commercial uses. And while I think they are needed and desired, especially on busy streets like Main Street, on those that are off of Main, they just simply aren't good shopping streets. As you know, um retail and office uses are not exactly um killing it in the marketplace, okay? We aren't just simply building on spec, that kind of development.
My apologies, your three minutes are.
Uh, please give consideration to the comments that I've given to you and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
We don't have any other public comment, is that right?
No, not here or in in the attending list. There's no.
So the public hearing is now closed. And uh do we have any questions um from the commission for city staff uh or members of the public who have testified? So um I have a question. Um, and I'm sorry, I've uh I've forgotten the name of the gentleman who just spoke to us.
Mr. Farrington?
Yes, please. So um I just wanna kind of summarize what I think you were saying. I I think what you were saying is we don't need a requirement for commercial space on the ground floor of these um potential conversions and mixed-use buildings. Is that what you were saying?
Um, yes, sir. I'm I'm more or less making a proposition that I believe that requirement upon major streets is a valid one. Elsewhere within pretty big areas of of the community that are zoned mixed-use commercial, you're kind of setting up the requirements to build commercial uses that may not be successful and at percentages and requirements that are going against really what market um realities, I think, would dictate. I would suggest that maybe this become more permissive than required in those areas that are off of major streets like Main Street. Portland has done something where they just simply waived the requirement altogether. I've offered something a little bit differently that says, well, major streets like Main Street, that requirement is valid. If you build a mixed-use project elsewhere, perhaps waive that requirement on on non-major streets, non-artorial streets. Um, I I think there is gonna be a problem that you might find with sites that have multiple buildings, some buildings that don't even have street frontage, and a requirement for commercial uses in those areas is kind of a recipe for failure.
Okay.
So while the code is open, here's an opportunity to make a fix.
Sure. So just for clarity for myself, um you're the you're the same person and this is the same proposal that was written into the uh the public testimony online.
Correct.
Okay, and um maybe I'm mistaking this with from with something else. But I think it's possible this was an issue that staff said um might fit better into a different part of the code amendment. Is this what you were talking about or is that something else?
Uh, yes, Chair. So thank you, Mr. Farrington, for your comments. Um, one thing, uh we appreciate you providing this to us. So uh we just wanted to talk about a couple parts of the code itself. So if you're looking at the testimony provided in the Springfield Development Code in the section that Mr. Farrington has uh listed in his memo here, um the very first part in three point two six thirty, the establishment of mixed-use development standards applies to the mixed-use zone. The very first part says the preservation of commercial land supply. So that's specifically talking about the mixed-use commercial districts. Um, and we just kind of wanted to address kind of in in the memo. And of course, this is just the testimony that he provided commenting on, we'd like to amend that section of code. Mr. Farrington didn't necessarily address the like the preservation of the commercial land supply, uh which is something that we uh as staff will be looking at in at in the future um when it comes to our buildable lands inventory um and also that preservation of commercial land supply and how that could in fact impact the community itself. At the same time, we also did receive a grant from the Department of Land Conservation and Development to look at these mixed-use districts in particular and draft clear and objective standards to build more housing in these mixed-use districts. Granted, we just received that grant, so we're not working on the project right now, but we will be working on it this summer and into the fall. So we are working on it, but um I don't necessarily recommend that we include these changes at this time in these code amendments because these code amendments are focused on income-qualified housing, um which we also provided an exception to these standards for those amendments here and Mr. Farrington uh referenced that in his memo. So um stay tuned. We would like to address it at a different time.
Any other? Go ahead.
Well, so so you're saying the the idea here is is has merit and but at this time, but you will look at it later, because I mean, from my point of view, I mean, it makes good sense.
Yes.
Um, but yeah, the the quantity of available. Okay, thank you.
Well, I'll I'll just add that because um the legislation specifically said we did not have to update our buildable lands inventory to account for this um change in what we allow. Um, the findings were pretty easy to support these amendments, whereas if we went beyond what the state required, we'd have to justify that with the findings and that's more work that we don't have done at this point. So and taking that broader picture look throughout the community, what would that mean?
Yeah, um I'm I'm inclined to say the summer is not that far away. And if you feel like you can address this and and fit it in at that time and then I'm fine with that. Are you ready for a motion to approve a recommendation on the code amendments?
You had closed the hearing, but then you called him back up to speak and so in essence the hearing reopened.
So sorry.
So that's okay. Um, you wanted to have some more testimony from him, which is fine. So you will need to take more action to um close the hearing before you go to a motion.
Okay. Well, then uh I would say the public hearing is now closed. And now are we ready for a motion to approve a recommendation on the code amendments? Anybody? I would welcome a motion.
I move to approve the amendment as presented here by staff and in our packet this evening.
Okay. Any further discussion? Can I have a roll call, please?
Chair Rhodes, die?
Hi.
Vice Chair Buck?
Hi.
Commissioner Schmunk?
Hi.
Commissioner Stout?
Hi.
Commissioner Weber?
Hi.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay. Do you have any business from the Planning Commission? I'll just note that I will be giving a report on last night's city council meeting as soon as it gets posted on YouTube. Do you have any? Do we have any other business from the Planning Commission? Doesn't sound like it, but. Okay. Any business from the Development and Public Works Department?
Sure, as I mentioned at your last meeting, you will have another meeting this month on April sixteenth. I don't yet know if it will include a work session, but there is at least a public hearing that will be at seven o'clock, and so stay tuned. We may have a work session as well at six. Also, I'm sure you did see Mr. Farrington's comments posted in Springfield Oregon Speaks, and this is a good chance to remind you that if you go in and you actually log in, you can note that you have read those comments. That way, people can see that you have read them and have that feedback. So as we're coming into some more public hearings, just as a reminder, if you need help logging into Springfield Oregon Speaks, give Sarah or me a call, and we can help you do that. And that's all I had. Thanks for hanging in there tonight. You had a lot to deal with.
Okay, yeah, thank you, everyone.
Vice Chair, great job tonight, juggling all this.
Thank you. I'm going to adjourn the Planning Commission regular meeting.
Bye-bye.
All right, good night, everyone.